All right, I'd like to call meeting to order. Stamp the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic with which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to approve the minutes of the prior meeting. February twelfth, two thousand twenty-four monthly and the February twelfth, two thousand twenty-four special. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
This is so moved.
Uh, I'm gonna step down in a second. Geez, Tina, I almost had it too. Nobody, you have to keep up on me.
Jump the gun.
Uh, I stepped down in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, reading of correspondence is none. Uh, our financial conditions. Our operating budget tax, uh, to actual balances. Uh, income for fiscal twenty-four, two million eighty-three thousand two hundred and forty-seven. Our expenses, two million six hundred and six thousand nine hundred and thirty. Receivables, outstanding water receivables, four hundred and fifteen thousand five hundred and fifty-two. Wow.
Oh, I owe you money too.
Those, yeah, those, those one hundred.
Uh, months commitments, five hundred and nine thousand nine hundred and twelve. Uh, water receivables, one hundred and seventy-five thousand eight hundred and eighty-seven. Do I have a motion to accept the financial reports as presented?
So moved.
Step down a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Uh, expenditure warrants, uh, motion to approve expenditure warrants as follows.
Sorry.
Go.
It, general operating.
There you go, thank you. I appreciate that. Uh, we'll go with the go, general operating. Uh, seventy-three for fourteen thousand three dollars and eighty cents. Uh, go seventy-six for thirty-nine thousand seven hundred and eighty-eight, seven hundred eighty-eight and sixty-eight cents. Uh, number seventy-seven for ten thousand six hundred and fifty-three dollars and thirty-eight cents. Number seventy-eight for fifteen thousand forty-three dollars and twenty cents. Uh, seventy-nine for thirty-four thousand seven hundred and fifty-three dollars and eighty-five cents. Number eighty for ninety thousand seven hundred and forty-eight dollars and fifty-one cents. Number eighty-one for fourteen thousand two hundred and seven dollars and sixty-five cents. Number eighty-two for nine thousand five, uh, five hundred and thirty-one dollars. Thank you, no sense. Eighty-six for eight thousand seven hundred and sixty-eight dollars and thirty cents. Uh, eighty-seven for one thousand five hundred and eight dollars and fifty-five cents, one nineteen SRF, eighteen thousand sixteen dollars and one twenty SRF for four thousand nine hundred and eighty-six and twenty-five dollars. One twenty-one SRF for three thousand five hundred and eighty-two dollars and twenty-five cents.
So moved.
Yeah, I'll step down in a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I have a headache now.
I'm sorry.
My eyes are really bad. Uh, superintendent's report.
Oh, we had a few people retire in the past month and two and a half. Uh, I wanna thank Bob Tebow for his twenty-three years of dedicated service. And Greg Olson, the thirteen years, retired last week. And Missy Rose, for ten years of service, um, she retired last week. So we got some vacancies we have to. Phil?
How long was Robert envoy?
Twenty-three. So I would like to thank the three of them for their service. Uh, treatment plant, operators installed some new pH probes. Harbor controls, some new software installed, programmed the computers.
Would they get that done? Yep, the five hundred gallons a minute.
They got it up to it.
Did he?
Yeah.
Is he able to hold it?
We've been doing pretty good with that, so.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll see, we're gonna try a couple other things of, uh, on the backwash after running the two clear wells at the same time, ramping up the pumps, see if that helps us out too. But that's in the work, so maybe this week. Been pretty busy, so.
Yeah.
Uh, Thai sales, Dan visited the site here, he works on the pumps. And he went over the maintenance of a couple of them and we were ordering some parts from them. The operators will be replacing some new chem feed lines, we're ordering the parts for that. Last few weeks, chemical leaks, we paid some fittings. Gary and Mike attended a Thai sales chem feed pump class at Swansea Water District. That was offered by Thai Sales, they got some credits for it. Gary attended a communication, communications for unexpected water quality issues. Uh, me and Tina were supposed to go also, but Tina had a personal, uh, issue and I had to, uh, I had surgery on my knee, so I couldn't attend.
What was it for?
That was for the, uh, communicate, um, sorry, for the water quality issues and stuff like that. They would just like tell you what to expect and tell people and stuff, what to do.
Right.
So they offered every year, I think, that class, so next year we'll probably try to get to that. Uh, Jason's first day was two twenty twenty-four, his assistant is working well, has been a great addition to the district. Scott and Jason worked on the DEP paperwork for primary operator status and today that he was approved for it, today. Cedar Street Well A-one, approval letter to abandon and decommission the well. They've been working down there on that well, Scott, we'll talk more about that later. Uh, distribution, the, uh, DBP violation, sample date two-six twenty twenty-four, fire station ninety point nine, we're over that level. We sent the letter to the DEP, they approved it and we sent, we've been sending, we sent that out this week to all the customers and, uh, posted that. Uh, USG Water will be doing an inspection of the Elm Street Tank on three twenty-nine twenty-four. And raw water insertion valve was done today and completed. That was on Smith Street. That was good, yeah. I think that's it for communication bills, a couple more things on, but I wasn't able to get to them and I'll be on the next report.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the superintendent's report as presented.
So moved.
I'll step down a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Old business, uh, MLI repair. How we doing?
It slowed down a bit.
Yeah.
With the change of, you know, people going out, we're not pushing the.
Right, obviously.
Do you need public?
No, not yet.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, you could, we could have anyone.
We've been doing, we've been doing good on it, we're getting it, but then, uh, we lost the two employees and they were taking, they had personal time to take, so to try to get appointments and schedule stuff. They were bouncing in and out, so it was kinda tough to do anything like that.
How many are left again? How many are left?
Employees left on there?
No, 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 the repairs, the repairs.
What did we say, it was a hundred?
Uh, there's a hundred and fifty of the ones that weren't working right.
Right, yeah.
But then we have, um, analogs that need to be changed now.
Are there, are there any?
Yeah, so maybe like four hundred or so, totally.
Are we going after the ones that, we're going after all of them, is that it right?
Yeah, especially the ones that aren't reading.
Are there some on the network? We're going after all of them.
Yeah, anyone that needs to be changed.
So there's only a hundred and fifty left of basically?
Of the ones that have the, the.
That.
Faulty, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, when we get the employees in, we're gonna.
So.
Then we'll send letters.
We have a hundred and fifty, basically, Zender readers out there.
No, 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 the ones that are, aren't.
Oh, yeah, we gotta hit them all.
Yeah, we get more, so. I think there's only a total of like four, five hundred of total analogs and that we need to get into.
And the crap, and the bad Zenders, yeah. And, and the other better.
Yeah.
All three categories. I think that, okay. It's not bad, but it is a quarter of our district.
Yeah, they still, Zenites still be out there that are working properly, that will hit up as we go.
The ones who can't read, we're giving them a generous bill.
Oh.
No.
Yeah, well.
The only way to get them.
Yeah.
No, we're gonna, we're gonna help on them, they're gonna get letters and we're gonna get it in.
Well, I mean, like.
Thirty day.
You gotta, you gotta over.
Yeah, we estimate high.
Oh, yeah. Okay. Cause we don't wanna get that in the backside, cause then you'll never get them. You gotta go. They call, they yell and then they're like, oh, that's it, okay.
We're gonna get into them, definitely.
All right.
John's on his way, I didn't.
Who?
John is on his way.
Oh, we're gonna turn around. Main Street Water Main Project update, is it right?
Did you do Brook Street, uh, update?
Yeah, nothing, right?
Uh, I talked to Chris Wickman down at Somerset and, uh, they're talking about decommissioning the well over there.
Have fun.
And, uh, they still wanna sell us the well.
Yeah.
But I told him that we're not paying six million dollars for it.
He wants to decommission it, have at it.
Good, good.
Good relations.
Could be worth a lot less if you decommission it. But, uh, I wanna talk to him, I wanna visit the site with him and, uh, I'll see what they, what they want for it.
Uh, but I mean, not knowing PFAS and.
Yeah.
The treatment we have to put into it.
PFAS is like four, three over there.
We don't know what we're gonna, yeah.
Know that, I understand.
Right. Well, it's just too rough in the air to spend that kind of money and they have to spend it on a four.
It's a lot of money for, uh, question mark at the end of it.
Right, right.
I get it, but I'll listen to what they have to say.
Absolutely, I mean. Whatever Chris has to say is, uh, he's a good egg, so.
Yeah, Chris is a good guy.
Yeah, he's a good egg.
Long Chris walk.
But I mean, Chris, Chris would give it to you if it was up there. You know, Chris doesn't. He's a good dude.
And they're in a financial situation down there too, so I'm sure anything they get would be helpful for them. That's why they wanna decommission the well.
I would, yeah, well, to that, to piggyback this, um, I might as well, I'll piggyback that. I was invited to go to a, we're gonna have to get you guys involved. A regionalization meeting with surrounding area towns. A lot of surrounding area towns, I don't know how many, there was so many, uh, to.
Is that a study they're doing?
To possibly.
They got a grant to do this?
Well, they, they, they have to rebrand how they wanna do it, but Aquaria. So that's another option.
Aquaria's involved in it to re, re, regionalize now?
Well, it was more, it was more the city of Barakam. They may, they've been talking about.
To sell water to here.
But they have to rebrand how they're gonna get it, cause it would be nice for them to get an SRF and then, and then. More is enough.
Was Mr. Mullen involved in this meeting?
No, no, market it, market it that way, you know, they have to market it as their, they're gonna be able to provide water for surrounding towns who are interested. Now, um, oh, I don't know. I wasn't able to make the meeting, but, um, I have the minutes for it. But it was, it's.
They're gonna have another meeting on it? Oh, let me know, we'll go.
Yes, yeah. Kinda snuck up on me, I actually, it was another one I forgot to go to.
Yeah, that's right.
I didn't remind you?
No, I didn't even need to tell you.
I know.
Anyway, it's, things are hot, no.
Reach out to Mike and he, he get it done or?
I mean, he can. He can.
So what would they do, they'd sell us, they'd put it, uh?
I don't know yet, it's so early, they don't know.
And they'd sell us the water.
Right, they pump water and there's no beef.
They'd sell it to the Dye Water District.
It's an option, let's just say it would be an option. We have to weigh your options.
Yeah.
Do you dump money in wells?
We'll see what they get to say.
Again, this is so early, but it's now at least being talked about.
Could be glass break there too.
No, not gonna.
No?
No, I don't think so.
Ooh.
It's just an option.
Okay.
Yeah.
So anyway, we got that. Main Street?
Main Street's completed, did, perfect.
Take that off the list.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, I think everything's paid, right? Everything's paid.
No, we're waiting for the last, um.
Oh, the last payment, yes.
Pay rec.
Pay rec, everything, the job's done, we're just waiting for that.
Oh, that's cool. C-1A?
C-1A, they're working on it, they're, uh, gonna be tying that in on, hopefully next week.
Still pumping?
No, tying it into the system, into the, uh, Raw Water Main.
They're re-divert, diverting it from where it is, right?
Yeah, that's why we did the valve, uh, insertion valve and, uh, they got, uh, talking about some electronics, twenty-two week backlog on it.
Oh, my god.
That's what Friday's meeting, we talked about.
Electronics?
Yeah, some electronics.
Really? Like level sensors?
Says they're gonna let us know very shortly what's, what's the tie-up, if it's, if it's gonna happen or not on that part of it. But everything else looks pretty good.
Like VFTs and stuff?
Just did some electronics, some electronic parts.
Okay.
But I thought that was.
What's another twenty-two weeks at this point?
Well, I thought that was pretty excessive, you know?
Yeah, it's bad, I've noticed it with my plant, going up, it's like.
On electronics stuff or just?
The electronics especially.
Yeah.
It's nuts.
Right.
Bananas, don't buy a generator. Anytime, if you buy it for like two thousand twenty-seven, you're doing it. Predominant. All right, altitude valve?
Altitude valve, I'm, uh, waiting for, to hear from them when they're coming back.
All right.
They left the other day, they finished, they completed that, they completed the, the three valves.
Yeah.
Is that on here?
I, I saw him in there.
I thought I had. Maybe I missed it, but they completed the three valves, we got one more valve to put in and then start on the altitude valve. So I'll give them a call tomorrow.
DBPs? Disinfection, I, I heard you.
I put in, and then it's, uh, we sent out the letters, we had a violation.
It's got better though.
We sent out the letters, so.
Letting. Letting copper.
Letting copper, LCR, that's, that's, uh, we've been approved and, uh, they'll be starting on that.
Cool. Discharge, that's not bad. You guys did that.
Discharge treatment, that's completed?
Yeah. There you go. Treatment plant valve replacement, you, you just talked about that, yeah, they're all done.
The three, oh, that's where they put it down here, yeah, three installed, the ten inches next and, uh, get that done one day, that should be done.
Nice. New business, annual district meeting or budget? So annual district is scheduled possibly for May twenty-third?
It is May twenty-third.
All right, it's May twenty-third, Tina said.
It's the fourth, fourth Thursday of May.
What time?
What time?
Seven o'clock.
May twenty-third?
Yes. I gave you a copy.
At the, at the middle school?
Yes. Gave you a copy of the, the first draft of very rough draft as well.
I wanna put a truck on it. Trucks are in very poor condition. Yeah, we had one today with the trailer was on it and, uh.
Some of those twel-, two thousand twelve's are kinda long, too.
Yeah, twenty, they were twelve years old, so.
They're not bad for bombing around, like.
No, but they were.
Samples and stuff.
Torn stuff.
I know, so they were.
We're trucks, we, we need, we need some new trucks. One this year, maybe one next year.
Yeah.
The employees to drive them.
Yeah. Um, where, where was, uh, yeah, so the district meeting, so yeah, that's good. Uh, ASR, discuss.
Uh, statistic report?
Yeah.
They're working on it, should be completed very shortly, yeah.
Um, so we have an open distribution operator position. Is it open or is it going through the unions though?
Today was the last day, right, from the post, the post-it?
In-house, yeah.
Tomorrow?
All right.
Tomorrow, you're gonna post out and get the applications starting coming in.
I'll do it for the Dyben Water Works.
Yeah.
Uh, the open distribution foreman position.
We had one candidate in-house apply for it, Pat Gary. You wanna act on that tonight or you wanna discuss it?
Um, gonna save that for our, I mean, it's personnel, we should save that for.
Executive session, all right.
Brief, brief. Save that one for executive session if we can.
We can't go into executive session tonight.
No, then, uh.
We, you, we could always do a special meeting, you know.
No, I'm not doing that.
Could you in the morning, like seven o'clock?
Eric? You have any act, you got anything to discuss?
Good, yeah.
Okay, he's good, I'm good.
Good?
Yeah.
All right, you got a good motion, I know you're just, I don't know.
Make a motion to.
Appoint?
Appoint Gary as, does have you read, as a, I have a lot of questions. Uh, to appoint Gary as the foreman for the Dyben Water. Do I have a motion to accept that?
So moved.
Step down a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Was Gary's last name?
Roulette? Uh, prime operator treatment plant agreement.
So now we have two openings now for, two openings for distribution.
Correct, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So we'll hire two.
Right, we, you know, just work it through the union that you don't have to.
Post it again?
Post it again.
Well, nobody wants it, so why would I have to post it?
Yeah, we already had it, like, open, it didn't say that we were hiring one, it just says we were hiring.
So, okay.
We had both posted.
Okay.
So we clicked up, we just put that, that we're hiring positions for.
Okay.
Utility servicemen and then we'll take applications and, uh, we can get that process going, cause we gotta get them in here as soon as possible.
Yeah.
That's amazing.
Yeah. Big turnover.
Is there a motion to approve the following, it fits for Jason to us, prime operator upon the hire date of February twentieth of two thousand twenty-four? Fifteen vacation days and six personal days for you now. Yeah, I have a motion to approve that.
Yeah, this is, uh, I think this is, yes, motion, definitely.
Yeah, so moved.
I'll step down a second, all those in favor?
Sorry.
Aye.
Sorry.
So, so the other thing is we, we're gonna have to go into, talk to the union about opening up the contract at some point and, uh, put people on now for on-call status.
Right.
So maybe next, uh, talk to Nelson.
Yeah.
And, uh.
He's been calling me lately.
Yeah, tell them that, that, that's what we're gonna be looking at.
Yeah.
Or they can run back what they want and, uh, we, we're looking forward, what we're looking for. So it does state in a, in a hiring, that they're gonna be, have to be on-call.
Okay.
Okay.
Um, I lost track, hey, give me a second. Um. Okay. Uh, announcements, next regular meeting, the commission is April ninth, two thousand twenty-four, six P M. All good?
Good.
Tentatively good. As long as Eric and I are here.
We'll read mine too.
Annual.
We'll be at a game at D R.
Right, probably.
Oh.
Annual Water District elections are May twentieth, two thousand twenty-four, any wish, anyone wishing to be placed on the ballot must fill out a request to be placed on the ballot form, uh, available at the Dyben Water District office, deadline is April fifteenth, twenty-four, so. Public input.
Two things.
Damn it.
We got in the THMs, um, how did the, did the flush have any impact?
Flushing, yeah, came down with it.
Yeah, okay.
So we're gonna be flushing again, but we gotta go through this process of, uh, what, uh, recommend and then the letter, letter, uh, what the recommendations were from our engineers. So they're gonna be doing some, uh, pressure, uh, some testing, flow testing at the, at the, uh, tank area, around that area, see if it affects the, see if we can shut the tank off. So they'll do flow testing first, shut the tank off, do more flow testing, and if it's feasible, we're gonna leave the tank off.
John too.
And so.
Just let them do a journey.
That's what they're, that's what they're looking at to do with that and then this, the process, we get steps we have to go through. If this doesn't work, then we go to the next step, so. And then we're gonna be flushing after that. And, uh, this is some of the stuff we got from flushing, came off the water mains.
Yeah, the old pipes too, right?
Iron and manganese, yeah.
Right, I see the iron, it's pipes.
Yeah, the old pipes, yeah, so. It was good, we haven't had many water complaints, you know, even today they did some, they did some, they're doing some testing tonight, right?
Hi, John.
Hi, John.
Hi.
Come on in.
Gotta lead the devil.
Yeah.
Right, and then, the second thing is, wanna thank all of you, as you're well aware, this is my last meeting, appreciate the hospitality, your support, great work with all of you, we are the best.
Thank you, lady.
Water District is totally lucky to have you, very lucky to have you.
Well, you're still welcome to come back to our meetings if you like.
What's your next step?
Open space and conservation. We need to preserve the integrity of rural Dyben.
Hmm.
Before the developers come in and turn it into a metropolitan center, they have their way.
Yeah.
Well, good luck.
I, uh.
Yeah. Oh, uh, uh, um, solar farm area, right?
No, that's.
I think that's a good thing.
It's gonna be limited, um, not everyone in the community is happy with it. But one of the solar farm projects, I found out at the, uh, House Ways and Means Committee meeting, the Cabral Solar Project is one of the most unique projects in the whole state. A lot of people are gonna be inquiring and looking at that, the fact that they've been able to build a solar farm, but also continue to farm it. They just raised the solar panels up, so Mr. Cabral can still farm his land and make revenue off the solar and that helps to keep his farm running because the federal farming subsidies have been cut. So that's allowing him to continue in the farming business and provide power.
Secondary income from it.
Yes.
Yeah.
Wow.
So.
Interesting, good.
It is very.
Well, likes are coming to our meetings.
Yeah, like.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We'd be lonely without you.
Uh, yeah.
We just want the word to get out to people and hopefully my replacement will continue to do that, it's very important, residents know.
Yeah.
How many people are running for your position?
No one, my Pacheco, there used to be the clerk, will be.
Just one person for him?
None of the elections are being contested.
Wow.
Yeah.
That's cool.
So.
So you're ever gonna run again?
I might, down the road.
Down the road, actually.
Taking a break.
Taking a break. We all need a break.
It's stressful, that is.
Depends what kind of break you're talking about.
Yeah.
Not one that's in the ground.
Anything on letting copper, did we get that right?
What's that?
We did, right?
The grant?
I thought so, I couldn't remember.
Yeah, it is grant for it, yeah.
Yeah, so we'll have to put an article on the annual to put that money back into.
That's great, good job.
Yeah. It's good, pop, chunk of change.
Hell, yeah.
Yeah.
But that's a lot of, uh, budget actually, right? That's why it's so over and. But it's really. But it's really.
Four million dollars and a special item.
Yeah, it's a lot, but a lot of it. Tina's already knows how we're gonna spend it, so.
Porch?
Yeah, cause you know me, I'm like.
They say get the letter.
I'm cheap.
Did you see, did you see the chemical bid list now, or the new?
I didn't see it yet, I, is it, was it with everything I saw?
It's gotta go up like. Do we piggyback on that? Do we piggyback with someone else or?
Sursage, so.
Yeah, we'll be getting the thing in to, to fill out the quantities.
Yeah, I would, I would just add to it that it's gonna, I don't know if you're getting close to it now.
Oh, yeah, should I add, yeah, we're gonna be over this year.
Yeah, you're gonna have to hand, it's, it's honestly gone through the roof. Just got a few.
It hopped a lot this time, yeah.
About the chemicals, all the.
They're going way up.
Why would it, why would go through, I mean, I would, I could say before COVID or just after COVID, but.
I could tell you why, have you seen inflation, your retirees don't know about inflation.
Well, we do, but we just.